Okay.
Are we in the right meeting now?
Yeah, we think so. Just a quick recap, we did open our meeting, we were recording. We were broadcasting under a Zoom link that was actually for our Wednesday meeting. So we will take the recording that we had for the first 20 minutes and make sure it's available as part of our meeting for this. To this point, we opened the meeting, pledge of allegiance, no minutes. We had a meeting with the senior center director and two members of the public that are organizing the Hartspring, basically donation center, if you will, and authorized them, motion by Craig to authorize them to go through another year contract starting November 1st. Authorized the senior center director to sign that contract. Craig gave us a quick update on the fiber optic program and the article for that on the warrant. And right now, we're just talking about the town administrator account, item number three on the warrant. Is there anybody recording the meeting? Since nobody knew meeting was happening.
Dalton is on.
Is he?
Dalton is on.
Dalton, okay, I Dalton. All right. So then, I'm just saying that maybe you're...
Can we post the, can you share the warrant? Can you share it on the?
On the screen?
On the screen?
Sure.
Yes.
The draft.
Yes. It's on there.
Can you do it, Lauren? If you drop.
Did you find the thing?
Yeah, drop that.
Assessment, right.
Oh, no.
It's under town hall.
What's under what is this?
Town hall.
Oh, okay.
And one label, assessment, conditions assessment.
All right, I'll just take it off.
Town hall conditions is, and down there.
Take it off later, fish.
Three years on Zoom?
Cool.
Three years on Zoom. Oh, good. That's all. Oh, good. Don't shout, don't click shout.
Now, if you bring back, come back zoom. Go back to full coverage there in full zoom and just do, yeah.
Okay. Dalton, can you see that screen? Ted, anybody on? Joe? Bad? Okay. Moving on. So, Article 3. So that may be a, no action.
Yes, he got, yes, I can.
Okay, good, thank you.
All right. And Caroline said too, also, okay.
All right. Article 4, emergency notification system. Okay, thank you for adding the line item, although I think it should, I think it also should be in the, I think it also should be in the article as well, not just the motion. The line items, you added for the motion, I think they should be in the article, which we haven't...
But not the number, just the line item.
No, no, but it's in, the line, yeah, yeah.
We don't have 2,000 bucks?
Not in that account.
So that was basically...
That was basically the setup.
Blackbird?
Yes.
Blackbird.
Blackbird.
Yeah.
Blackbird.
Blackbird.
Please don't. All right, CPC. I know Doug said a couple of things he mentioned, so he has not posted that.
I sent him a message today asking, you know, where are we in?
He's still...
Those will be added tomorrow, I'm sure.
Well, he's still trying to set up a date for a meeting and he's still reaching out to a couple of boards that had changes in their membership and finding out who their rep is for the CPC.
Okay.
So. And so it's Eric, Eric used to be the rep from Parks, he's no longer on the board, they needed a rep. Animal control. Basically, this is the...
They need additional money because of the
Housing Luna.
Additional expense for housing a dog.
What about the beavers, Beaver Deceiver and the, all that stuff?
We don't have a number yet on that from Finn, but when we get that, add it in.
Well, I guess my concern is, we met about this about three or four weeks ago, and the beavers are still beaving. What do they do?
No, he's already, I know he captured some already, so.
Have they captured some?
Yeah, for the Finn.
We have to pay that guy, right?
Well, knows what he uses for, you know.
Well, let me talk to Finn again. I did ask him to get me some numbers for a Beaver, for Beaver deceivers and his judgment as to where we need to implement them now.
Beavers deceivers aren't going to do anything until we get rid of the beavers. You clear the issue, right? So I think the issue was getting rid of the beavers.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, and you get rid of the beavers.
I'm just concerned about the people's property there, you know?
Last I talked to Finn last week, he said that he was, had a meeting set up with Beaver Solutions to come and inspect the area.
Correct. And they'll deal with the beavers as well.
They'll, they'll take the beavers.
But he also said to me that if we just do the beavers, they come, a new generation comes back next year, so.
Then we also have to figure out how to release the water flow safely.
Right. So that's, I think that's all got to go in there, I mean, while we're doing this.
You're looking to put funding in the animal control for the beavers, is what you're doing?
Yeah, right, that's the animal control, right, yeah. Right.
Makes sense.
On the Minotaur Land Trust article, town council called today and she said she thinks that there ought to be some more work on this article.
Cool. I would have a question, there's one thing here where it says purchases from Olga, which Pony's wife, I remember, from the camp, you know, and the land trust. And aren't we purchasing it from the Olga to the land trust to manage? I mean, we're not buying from both of them.
We're not buying from them, that's, that's why, that's what we discussed that needs to be changed.
But again, this is, we've had this article in different forms.
A thousand times.
Right, whether it was North Row, whether it was
Mountain Vision.
Mountain Vision, right. So this language shouldn't be that much of a surprise, where we buy it and turn it over, so. I like your motion. Article still needs work.
Yeah, right. Is it going to be managed by the conservation commission? Controlled by the conservation commission? Doesn't the land trust control it?
Yeah, the land trust, as I understand, the land trust will then take it and there will be a CR involved.
Well, they'll, they'll maintain the CR, but the town will still own it, right? I don't understand, controlled by conservation commission, I would thought.
When was that last one done, do you remember?
I don't.
Well, the language here is what was sent to me, and that's what council said she thought that additional work is needed.
Purchase of 15, to be managed and controlled by the conservation division. But we're going to own it, wouldn't we? That's what you're saying, right?
Right, right.
Right. We'll own it, but usually the town owns it, but the land trust owns the CR to it usually, like all the other properties.
This is adjacent to another land trust property.
Well, like I say, we did North Road, we did Mountain Road, the Martin Land, it should be, no.
Three, four years ago?
Right, there shouldn't be a mystery. All right, next. Highway tractor. So there was some questions about that last week. I did talk to Mark and he's, he did confirm delivery is not good. If it's ordered in November after, if this goes through, he would anticipate getting the tractor and the pertinences, if you will, in the April to May timeframe. If it went to the annual town meeting, and technically you wouldn't be able to buy it till July, you would get it basically in effect for the following year, because you have it at the end of the year, which is not useful. The current track they have, the, does not do the job, can't fix the sickle bar. I said, what value is there on the trade-in? He's looking into that and see if he can knock that number down somewhat, you know, maybe somebody wants a tractor for whatever, you know, sell it for something. But I think he can make a good case, this is the same amount done that we did with the excavator thing before, because delivery is so bad, not like Lomas has them down there waiting for you to pick up anymore. Not like that, you know, lined up on their Tyler equipment. You know, with delivery time, you need it when they need it. What was the thing we talked about with the excavators? That the rental cost actually was as much as it was going to be.
Yeah, if you had it rented, it'd be almost as much as the...
Right. Yeah. So I think he needs to come in with some more detail and I think make a good case, Mark, and people understand.
Just to touch on that, as a broad statement for annual town meeting and special town meeting, we've had a, you know, everything's getting faster paced in the world we live in, running a town is no different. Things change, things pop up, and when we're only allowed one time a year to make decisions blanket statement across the whole town, it's really tough to see little things pop up here and there. You know, we're trying really hard as a board not to keep kicking things down the road, kick things down the road. So having two town meetings where we could potentially take care of town business, you know, whether it's capital needs or replacements of certain things, I think it's beneficial to us to not always look at that, oh, or historically, we've only, you know, did cleanup and fall town meeting, whereas now we're starting to see a need for different things year round, not just for annual town meeting. So I think we can make the case that, you know, as evolving town, that it's necessary for different things that come up that need to be addressed.
And it's interesting, and Bob could probably speak to this, other towns have different ways of managing the money, where they have funds that they can appropriate, even in the city council or selectmen's meeting, because they have a fund. It goes back to, and Don, you remember when we first did the five-year road plan? You know, the advantage of that was that it was actually a line of credit, that, okay, we're going to do roads, roads, roads. But, this goes to your point, if something had happened, say a bridge went down, the town had immediate money, because we're authorized, we were already authorized for $2 million. Whereas now, your point is that, bridge goes down, we have to call a special town meeting, get authority to borrow money to fix it, and there's no, there's no quick response because of where we are managing the money.
I think as the budget grows and the complexity of the government grows, although I don't plead as town growing that much, but as we spend more and more, it becomes very difficult to plan an entire fiscal year at one meeting, which is at least the goal that we have, of not doing fiscal, significant fiscal items at the fall meeting. And so in some cases, a town will issue a bond that some committees are allowed to draw upon. For example, acquiring open space, I know towns would issue like a $10 million bond, and over, over 10 years or more, you're allowed to draw those funds when a property becomes available that town wants to purchase. And obviously, you know, if you get big enough, the next step is town council, which meets, like in East Long Meadow, meets regularly and has the power to take fiscal decisions.
True. All right, fire department brush truck, I know, Don, you've been concerned about this. So basically, I thought the explanation that the truck committee gave us was pretty good, they went out and looked at it, it's certainly unfortunate that the cost went up.
Well, well, I'm not sure the cost went up. The cost went up because after they got the money from the town meeting, they decided to put extra things on the truck. Because obviously, they put in a, they put in a, they had a truck, they put in a cost of it to the, to the federal government FEMA. FEMA awarded them 230,000, 10,000 our share. And then afterwards, and if you look at the town meeting minutes or the recording, the fire chief tells the town, we need $10,962, the truck will be ordered shortly. And that's a, you know, so there we are. So I'm just telling you, when he stands up, there's going to be issues. And they're going to want to know why it, the 10,000 bucks is now $44,000.
Well, I think what Andrew said at the meeting is they went to, was it Sturbridge?
Yeah.
And they got good feedback.
My point is this, my point is this, they, they got the grant, they sent the grant in, they got the grant in September, they had six months to go to Sturbridge before the town meeting, and they didn't, they went after the town meeting. That's my point, that's all.
That number, 219, hasn't changed, that's the FEMA amount.
That's what they're going to get, based on what we asked for. So I'm just making the chief aware that she should have his best uniform on to answer the questions at town meeting.
Well, I'm sure the committee will be there as well, this isn't one person doing the whole thing, I think they do appreciate it.
Yeah, I think too, there was no, there was no, there was no mention of a committee doing this either, but that's fine.
They were right here at our meeting.
I know, they were here, but not before the town meeting. Because I specifically asked the chief, could you explain the, the grant? And he said, yes, we put in a grant for a brush truck, $219,000, 230,000 was the award, 219 from the federal government, 10,962, the committee has built the truck and it'll be ordered shortly. The deputy chief has built the truck and will be ordered shortly. So I'm just, I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, I'm not saying we can't afford it, I'm not saying it should be another thing, I'm just...
Where are the dress news?
I'm telling you.
Dress whites.
Whites, I think.
Prepare for the issue. On the other hand, 50 people show up, may go through in 10 seconds.
Okay. The new AEDs.
That's an accurate number from the chief.
How many of them?
Nine.
Nine.
They cost that much?
Shared, but we have 12 all total.
Yeah.
Nine are shared by the police and fire departments, and they're the ones that, they would like to replace.
It costs about 2,500 apiece?
Another 2,600 apiece.
2,600 apiece. And what about the 5,600, the 5,600 need that we had approved at town meeting?
I know.
I think it was in the service contract, though.
Yeah, do we get credit on that?
Do we get credit?
Seems like the new ones would be under warranty.
Warranty on these.
Yeah. I, I, we haven't...
Done on that row yet.
We haven't discussed whether or not...
Maybe we use some of that extra maintenance money for the 10th of February.
Yeah, we'll put that up, we haven't put those paddles on yet, okay.
I'll let you go right into the rifles then, go ahead.
This...
In a row, Don, favorite subject.
We have six police cruisers in regular service. Each has one rifle. Rifles are seven to eight years of age, and the chief is asking for the replacement of all six at a cost of $7,794, you know?
Okay, this goes back to the question before about the emergency. Are these rifles failing? Do they get inspected and they fail the test, or?
This is what I was told, that a rifle actually fell apart when they were, I guess, went out to the shooting range.
But that's the only time they use these, right? It's been at the shooting range?
Uh, these rifles haven't been fired in the line of duty in town.
And to Craig's point from the last time, isn't this something that should be in the operations budget or the capital budget?
It shouldn't be a surprise, just, you know, that's what I'm saying.
I don't think it ever was. You're right, it should be going forward.
That's what you were saying, yeah, you know, that these types of things should be, you know?
We should account for them going forward.
Forward, yeah.
And this brings up another subject, that we're going to try and revive the capital committee, which within divide the one-time purchases of the town between those that go into the operating budget, small items like this, and those that have to, you know, are larger one-time things where we have to finance them in different ways. And we ought to have a list of those, we ought to have a list from the committee of, from the various departments of what they have to purchase over time, and they're not recurring expenses. We are going to revive the capital committee.
But it does go back, I think, to my point, what is the urgency on this? I know you said one is that, one is... And we don't have the six cruisers you're talking about, does that include the chief's vehicle?
No. No, we have six cars on the road as, as police cruisers.
The urgency is, you need it, and it's not there.
I know that, I mean, okay.
Bob said, one of them fell apart, and I know somebody was servicing one of them, and they're, they're telling them that they're in very poor condition, that they wouldn't trust their life to them.
Anyway, we should have known about that long before this, that they got to that stage, that's all. It's not a huge amount, but it's the process.
That's right.
Yeah, that's, yeah. All right, master plan, we've had that discussion here. Planning board would like to take another bite at the apple. That's their call. They think, you know, they work hard and they want to stand up and defend it.
Good luck.
I think they would appreciate those sentiments, Don, thank you. Carbon study committee, that's going to be less than half an hour, that report.
Interim report, and I don't know what's going to be in it, but I guess they're just going to say, this is what we've done, we've interviewed some people, and here's where we're going, and we're going to have something definite for the annual town meeting.
I think they've got you on tomorrow night, right? It's not a good time. Okay, pilot program, this is like you said, Don, this is, we did authorize a pilot negotiation for, this is
Borrego.
Borrego. But the state law has changed and they may be applying under a different section, so.
It's a different...
The authority needs to be different.
Yes.
Okay. As it gets money to the town.
Does it affect us in any way? Does it give us more money? Does it give us more money?
Well, they're changing how they think, so the authority to enter, do a pilot before doesn't exist because they're not going to do a clause 45 fight.
I just cut and pasted this from an email that I got from town council.
Does it change anything with their, their permit?
No, the only thing it changes is the deadline to have an agreement in, a pilot agreement in place by January 1, if you want to, and I'm sure this is something that maybe got lobbied through the legislature. I see that the GL is not listed there. So I just cut and pasted this quickly about a half an hour before the meeting, but...
Oh, the M is missing, but I see GL, section 59.
Yeah, but the, the chapter is missing. I mean...
It's not chapter 59?
The section is missing, the chapter is there. C59, section 5.
Yeah.
But it's, usually there's a general law, Roman numeral, general law.
Yeah, okay.
So, that's fixable.
Okay. The next four, I guess we can beat those to death, but it's, we talked about before, we have four requests from the school committee for warrant articles. We may not agree with how they propose them, but we are obligated to take them as proposed.
And these are presented the way Wilbraham is presenting.
Right, so since they sent them to us as four separate articles, and in my opinion...
They may not be there when they come our meeting.
That's right.
Wilbraham's meeting the week before, so things could change.
I think, you know, you stand a good chance with a menu like this, everyone gets 40%, and none of them go through, except the boiler. I think people don't understand, hey, you got to heat the building. To reduce the tax rate, I know talking to Kelly today, they're not done with new growth, and they do have a meeting, I think, tomorrow morning. So they're getting close to hopefully having something to discuss in October. As to where we stand with new growth, the one bad thing about new growth this year, this is the first year in a few years we have another solar field come up in the tax rate. So, treatment's been standard building and standard additions, if you will. So that would affect the next four articles. This, and this is kind of a general discussion, I would say, you know, we've had this kind of question before, both with Cliff and Dick, and I think Doug's made the same point. Do we have a goal for what we want to do? When you have a pretty large stabilization fund, they've made the point that, look, you can't say taxes aren't going up at all, because, look, people got up, voted a higher budget, and there has to be an understanding, when you spend more money, it costs you more. But we can try to mitigate that at least, you know, even though the budget went up, say, 4%, we can hopefully keep the increase down to 1% by applying some leftover money. And I don't think that's unrealistic.
What was Dick saying, if we, everything stays same, it's still a 2% increase, is that, is that what I remember him saying?
Yeah, but I don't think he had the, 2% seems...
Well, that, that's based on, you know, contractual agreements, like that, stuff like that, you know it's going to go up so much.
Oh, every year, normally, anyhow, right, right, yeah.
Yeah, 2%.
And look at what we passed and other things, you know, so. So I think the board, we should have a thought in our mind, you know. You know, gosh, we'd all like it, the tax bill to go down, but I don't think that's realistic. And I think they've also made the point, something, even though stabilization is pretty high, we have a lot of things coming down the pike. So tucking a little more away when you've got this building, which we're going to talk about, possible fire station, possible senior center, you know, anything we save now is going to mitigate the effect later on raising and appropriating. You don't have all the money we're going to make from fiber, we're going to take that money.
That's over 18%.
Just like tapping social security and using it for something else, right? Is there actually any money in social security?
I don't, I get a check every month.
Yeah, but what about my kids? What are they going to get?
He just, he got a check and say, okay, well, it's a good check.
My kids are out of luck, thanks a lot. So any more questions about the special community warrant? John? Lauren? Great. All right. Moving on, I asked to have the town hall thing going, this goes back to Don's point before about, hey, what are some of the things we've been discussing? And it's a good point, Don, gosh, we just crank those out there. So, but we got the report done, we got a sense of, oh my gosh, the building's in, I won't say critical, but it's, yeah, certainly not in great shape. What are we doing about it? What can we do about it? We had a proposed, what was the number, 4 to 7 million dollars?
4 to 7.
Yeah. After arguing about $7,000 for rifles.
4 million immediately, 7 by the, by year 10.
Exactly.
4 million immediately, and then 7 million by year 10.
Yeah, right. So.
I, I, I think we have to make, or the town has to make a basic decision. And maybe this is a referendum question at our, at our annual, not the town meeting, but annual election, right? Do you want to maintain the town hall, the historic building town hall, as your, as your town hall? Or do you want to build a new one, or do you want to, you know, Thornton Burgess should close, you know, move to a new location? I think whatever we, whatever that decision is, we, that's a three to five-year road thing by the time we...
Whichever way you go.
Whichever way you go. So we probably need to make some decisions about how to fix the electrical system or the plumbing or whatever the main, main issues are, but maybe we need to just go to the town and say, what do you want to do? You want to keep, because if you want to keep the building, it's 7 and 1/2 million bucks, and we're going to have to move some things around. If you don't want to, if you want to build a new building, we got to find a place, and if you want to, if Thornton Burgess closes or something like that, then you might be able to move it there, but it's still going to be expensive.
You do roof and parking?
Roof, parking, got to do...
Refer a little bit inside.
Refer a little bit inside, you know, so.
Ventilation, I think is what they said.
I mean, I don't know, do you go to, you go to the town with a referendum question and say?
I think that makes a good idea.
It does, but I mean, again, are you just, is it too vapor at that point? I mean, do you, where do you want to go? Well, what's going to cost me? Well, we're not sure. You know, that's the thing, which way you go, is this going to be Notre Dame being rebuilt, and you got scaffolding on here for three years while you're doing something?
Well, I think the point that Don's saying is, 5 to 7 million, or 4 to 7 million, to bring this building up to code and fix it. Well, I think the, the point that Don's saying is five to seven million, or four to seven million, to bring this building up to code and fix it. You know, would people want to see that? You know, the historic building, it's nature, it's been in town forever.
Forever, right.
Or is it time to look elsewhere? You know, either way, I think if you're looking, four to seven million dollars either way, right?
If, then if they, if, then if they say look elsewhere, then it's a whole other process begins then, but in the meantime, we got to spend some money to.
Well, I think if you were building from scratch, you'd be talking in the ten to fifteen range.
Yeah.
If you look at what the, just the seniors that are costing them, I mean, a building like that, the house, what we're doing.
Well, East Loe Millen, paying fifteen million, build a building for the swimming pool.
Well, look at this, they're also, they just paid six million for that Westfield Bank building to be a sub annex basically to the town hall.
Yeah.
Because they couldn't expand theirs anymore.
They could have put across the street, but, you know, banks.
A little skyway like they used to have in Springfield, right?
Yeah.
Sure. Or the underneath like Johnson's.
Johnson's bookstore used to go underneath the tunnel, yeah.
Dating ourselves.
We, we wanted to take some ARPA. Would you want to take some ARPA money and, and get an estimate as to what the cost would, in other words, if you want to say, I think we should go to TWB, no, we have to have some idea of.
Well, they don't know what's going to happen with TWB. That might be an, an help, you know.
No, but I did ask before, we paid for a report on TWB back in seventeen or eighteen. Uh, Brown from Wilbraham did it, TWB, yeah. Roy Brown.
Right, but.
TWB.
Right, yeah, right. But that wouldn't be much of a report. But I did say to them, okay, we paid for the report last time. You guys are looking at a condition thing, so I believe they have done some analysis of the basic.
High school probably has, no, miniature's probably, the region's probably got something.
That's what I'm saying, so, okay, we'd appreciate a copy of that.
Well, yeah, they know it needs technology and ventilation, so they must have some assessment.
Yeah, because we want to know about the bones.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know the technology part, that's not relevant to what we're doing.
Well, we're meeting tomorrow night, want me to ask the superintendent to come up with something?
If he's got, we could get a copy, please. So, I guess the question is, going forward, is there, but I have a question for the audience.
So, if you're going to make those three choices, whether you stay here, you build new, or you go to TWB, as I remember from the meeting where we talked about what you're going to do with this building, the four to seven million is just to fix the things that are wrong and doesn't really get it to be a functional building for moving forward.
And now you bring up a good point. That was when they also said, well, we'll move the library out. What do you do with that? Build a ten million dollar library somewhere?
That's, so my point would be, when you're ma, when you're making that choice, it's a lot easier choice to say.
There's no forward thinking on that.
There's really, you know, do, do you fix this to use it for I don't know what, but you don't, you're not going to use it for town offices, right? Because it's going to be a lot more than that. And the guy said, I think, if I remember right, you can do four to seven million worth of fixes, but once you start to move a wall or do something else to reconfigure, now you've got to meet a current code that costs you ten, fifteen million. So, we explained in those terms, it makes sense that, that, that maybe you're looking at, and, and I don't know what the contract is with TWB, but there, it makes those choices maybe a little bit easier to say, maybe we build new someplace.
And the thing is, like, somebody else said, well, you could move the town hall functions out and give the whole building to the library. It's still inaccessible. That's the thing, the amount of money just to make this, well, we got to put an elevator in, we got to maintain it. You're throwing a half million dollars into an elevator to keep the building in the public sector.
So, there'll be some emotion there, but I think if you sit down and, and try and sell it as,
Right.
this building really isn't going to be useful in five years or ten years, and to spend the seven million to try and get the whatever fixed, maybe doesn't make a lot of sense. If you can build new, if you can build new for fifteen million, combine the bit, the, the town hall and the library somewhere else, but I don't know what that number is.
Well, that's the thing, and you, when, just like you said, you fix it, but you don't address the space problems, there's no growth potential.
It's not useful once it's fixed.
Fire department somewhere else, and you grow out that way. So, you still have a building like this.
Be coming back to the town in eight or ten years saying, we need a new building.
Right.
And they'll say, well, what do we do with the seven million, you know? Anyway, I'm just making that point, that it's an easier sell if you kind of go down that road.
Yeah.
John, Don's asking the member of the community who's speaking to, for record.
The fifth selectman, Tad Brown.
Don knows me.
T H A D?
T A D.
T A D Brown.
Tell them I'm not really the fifth selectman. Don't, don't say that.
Yeah, don't, don't put that in there, thank you.
Well, the fourth one's here.
Yeah, John, John Terry. So, uh, this goes back to, I do, I think we have something going on with the fire station as they're trying to prepare an RRQ, so that's good. RP, excuse me. But I think we kicked this one down the road a little too much, and we have, we haven't addressed if there's flaws in the building and the potentially danger, we're, we're obligated to do something about it. So, I would ask the board to review this report again and see we need, where we need to focus. I'm loath to touch the ARPA, only because I think we have a sense we need every dollar of that for the water.
For the water. I can tell you, the only persistent complaint, and it's not that often, maybe it's once a month, is about the building not being handicapped accessible, or someone who has some moderate handicap, not in a wheelchair, struggling down the stairs here, you know, or in some cases, tripping as well.
I can't see us putting four million dollars in this building not to know the direction. Don, do you know, have a sense from your planning committee when they're going to come up with a decision? Out of the four options?
Well, I, I think that planning committee will come up with it pretty shortly, next couple of meetings, give it to the school committee, and then they'll decide what to do. But I think they want to get it all done by spring, because then they have to apply, then they have, they have to get that plan, that's, you know, they have to get it.
So, John, I know your point is about, you want to make sure this building's safe and secure. I mean, and I, I hate pushing stuff down the road, kicking the can, but, you know, is another couple of months to find out if we have another space utilized or another space available to us, whether that's going to work or not, worth waiting for?
I think it is. You know, I've always felt that the potential for TWB is still out there. And to me, in terms of the expense of building a whole new building, or looking at, maybe we're assuming too much that the building's in too good a shape. But we don't know that.
We don't know that.
And for the cost of a twenty, twenty-five thousand dollar report from Ty and Bond or somebody else to know that, hey, look, we own the building, we should know what shape it's in. We paid last time, they're using it, they should pay, but we need to get that information done. Thank you for reaching out to John tomorrow.
To Don's point, though, about a referendum question, we don't want to put three choices on there, we need to have two solid ones. So, my point is, if, you know, we, we had another month or two, didn't kind of see which way the school department's going, we either know we have an option for another building, or they're going to use the building. Then the question is, are we going here, or new, or here, or somewhere else?
Yeah.
I think, I think the problem is, maybe I'm not thinking outside of the box enough. But if I'm constrained to looking at, okay, we have this building here, it needs to be fixed, but when we're done fixing it, like Bob has said before, you still have the same issues. You still got a building that's too small, okay, we stuff things onto laser fiche, but we have no room for broke. We have people operating out of a closet, you know. Potentially, we have the accessibility fixed inside that number, but that's going to be expensive to maintain, we're going to know, going forward, it's just, I think that type of thing is still a Band-Aid going forward.
If you want to see cramped quarters, like I did today, go down to the park and rec office. Now that the, the new director is in the same office as Preston, in a small office to start with.
At least the window's not leaking in like it used to.
Well, to, to your point, John, the, in the report, they say if a reconfiguration, a reconfiguration still would not provide sufficient space for the town hall to remain in the building.
Right.
Renovation costs prove, the cost prohibitive, America keeping the town hall, the building, right, the fly, if the library can't be relocated elsewhere, then although not included, says my future planning study to look at the construction of a new building.
It's right there.
It may be, yeah. So, every hundred years, get another building.
This is otherwise, the town hall could also be a relocated alternative. I don't know if we have any alternative buildings.
John would be happy to name it after you. Thank you so much for volunteering.
That comes down to property now, too, right, Don? Property.
My only question. If, to understand, it's the end of twenty twenty-four, is when the decision is going to be made by the school committee on what they're doing with TWB?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah, around in that timeframe, I would mean.
Not end of twenty twenty-four.
No, 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 and the, I think they want to get it all done for the spring town meeting. And so, they, they think that they want to probably do it sometime in, you know, the first of the year. And then that'd give the superintendent and them time to get everything ready for town meeting. They have to get the Department of Employment, uh, the Department of, of Education, Secondary Education, Elementary, Secondary, to approve the plan. They got, they have to come up with, uh, changes in the agreement, the regional agreement, in order to allow students to go to.
It's not a perpetual agreement that Hamden has with the school committee?
Well, it's a lease we have for the building, and it expires at twenty thirty-five.
Twenty thirty.
Okay, I understand.
However, I think we all understand, if they're playing, they're, if they vote the plan that doesn't use the building, I'm sure.
They'd be very happy to get it.
Happy to get a mutual agreement.
Because they're responsible for heating it.
Right, exactly. I mean, we lose the dollar, but.
Yeah, we lose the dollar that they pay us.
Yearly.
On the paper, twelve paper.
This is similar to what was, is going on, John, with, uh, what's the other school? Memorial School. They closed that, and now that, now Wilbraham is going to use it for a community center, they're going to build a community center around it.
Yeah, parks and recs, I think.
Break it in a half million.
Thank you.
And only because, I don't want to say, because, I mean, they had to work hard at it, but was it because it weighed fat all so long?
I think so.
Right.
With a lot of code.
Right. Continuum misuse makes a lot of difference. What was the one they turned over in, in Northover, in Pine? Was that on one of the other side of the, uh, twenty?
Yeah.
Yeah. And you potentially might be closing Stony Hill, or that's one of the plans?
That's one of the options.
One of the options.
That went to, Grammar School used that for a while.
Well, yeah, yeah. A private grammar school.
No, it was called the Grammar School, yeah, it was, uh, Enfield, something like that. Okay, so, again, we have to understand what's happening there. Thank you. Elkhorn and TA discussion. Oh, quickly, let's just hit the letter. Uh, Don, thank you so much for drafting many copies of a letter. Did you get any note about a pencil and a razor?
I did, I did.
Yeah, thank you.
I ignored it.
Some people thought it was funny.
The purpose of this letter, I thought, would be to memorialize what we discussed with them, and have something like a document to work from to discuss for future meetings with them, and see if we can't help them out. That's all.
Yep, so, good. All right, so.
It lays out there exactly, you know, the willingness to work with you.
Sure. Concerns we have, and we're here, we stand, ready to help them as rest of them if they need us. Right. I appreciate that. I think it was clear, I like how you, you know, your point in the letter was that, we are here to help. Yeah, urge you and whatever we can do to, you know, assist your board. So, uh, looking forward, both to endorse Sammy's letter to.
I move to endorse Selecton Downport's letter to the Cemetery Commission, as written.
The most recent copy.
Draft three.
Draft three, thank you. You didn't date them, it would have been nice if they.
I called them cemetery.
Yeah, you bad, got a bad cemetery?
When you're up at four in the morning, you kind of, the dates, you don't know which day it is.
Is it tough keeping the pencil away or on the treadmill or something? Oh, jeez.
No, but she's thrown me out of the room more than once when I put the light on. I got an idea.
Yeah, I'll go have your idea in the kitchen.
Second.
All favor. Thank you, Don.
This, so you're going to, Lauren, you're going to have to put this on the stationary and all that stuff.
Yeah.
I sent you a copy, right?
Yes, I have it.
Okay, all right.
Check the date on it, okay, just make sure you got the right one. Uh, we have a town minister report.
Clerk Magitrite of the Palmer District Court has affirmed the order of the Board of Selectmen regarding the dangerous dog.
So, that just means she found no defect in what we did, basically.
You, you used the correct process.
Right, yeah.
No, that, that doesn't comment on the substance of the decision.
Right, not the merits, it was just done properly, yeah.
Yes, you did, you did it properly. I've decided.
What's happening with the dog, though?
Yeah. I have no information on what's happening with the dog.
Could they, could they, and they can appeal that from.
They can, they have, I think, ten days to appeal that, uh, into Superior Court.
Well, it's just about running out, it'd be good to know, keep checking this week, then, because that was last Monday, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's ten working days or ten day days.
When, when did the, when did the clerk affirm it?
I just received it when I arrived today, and apparently, you know when it arrived in the office? Was it Thursday or Friday?
Last week you told me you got it, so I think you weren't in Friday, so it had to be Thursday.
It wasn't here Friday, so I had to remember for that.
Yeah, Thursday, so.
All right, so I'll have to, we'll follow up on that.
So, is the date of receipt, date plate, I don't know, so, either way, follow up this week, and see if they do something. But I'd like to follow up with Shelley and see if we're monitoring the care of the dog, if you will, because some exposure there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I've, all the documents for the newest round of MVP, in this case, two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars to design a new bridge for East Main Street. And once that design is completed, uh, it would go to the Transportation Improvement Program of the region. And I think there's every prospect that the town can get that bridge replaced without, um, significant local cost. They are talking about.
But didn't they tell us they were using, uh, tip for the Rocka Dundee Bridge? Remember that? And like, unbeknownst to us, like, oh, we applied for a tip funding for your Rocka Dundee, like, need to know, thank you.
Yeah. And that's kind of a small project, though, for, for the tip. The tip is usually, you know, multi-million dollar projects. This thing is, this is going to be four million dollars or more.
Why?
This East Main Street Bridge. I mean, including some of the infrastructure.
For the toll booth?
Changes.
Oh, thanks.
I know, they're putting a draw.
They've worked for a lot of years.
Toll booth, you are for a lot of business.
Okay, uh, you, you know that we've been working on the motions. Uh, Lauren also did, uh, take in the MMA webinar on grant funding, so.
Did you find any? No.
But I think it's a good idea, as, as, I mean, MMA is now providing these, uh, educational webinars on a regular basis. And I think it's worth having staff people here, uh, tune in, because there's always something to learn. I mean, uh, I didn't, I didn't tune it in, but I'm sure if I, I watched it, I would have learned something. Now, two cases of triple E, Eastern Equine and cephalitis have been found in Hamden County, and there's information on our website advising residents to take precaution. This is very serious, and, and people should be very careful about mosquito exposure. Well, ad for conservation. Cemetery Commission is going to meet Thursday, the twenty-eighth, an executive session. And we've had two resignations, one from the transfer station, and I have a stamped resignation, meaning like it was stamped by the clerk from Mr. Baroso.
Did we, did we ever receive the one from Cliff?
No.
No. There's no resignation, no.
I wonder if it will go to us or to the state, though? He was the state appointee.
Well, we appointed him, though, right?
No, no, it's the state, he was the state appointee. We recommended a state.
Well, if his term expired, uh, then we, he doesn't have to resign.
We, we appointed him because the state didn't act, so we got to appoint him.
In other words, you resign, if you resign in the middle of your term, then you have to submit a written resignation, but if your term expires.
His term expired in twenty-four, I think.
Twenty-four, so, I don't think we received anything in writing from him.
No.
I may see him tomorrow, he's on the building committee, so.
So, he's not going, he's not going to serve out the term, he's going to resign.
We'll see, he's been obviously going through some medical, so we'll see if he comes tomorrow. Has he been here?
No.
Not much, yeah. Hope for best.
That's the.
The transfer station, does, you guys have plans? You put that out there for a new attendant or anything, or?
Uh, this is, if, if this isn't the one I know about, then this is new.
I thought the, that was a different name.
Yeah.
Except, yeah.
No, no, they, he, they, they've hired someone, they've hired a gentleman named Yakavoni. Harold Lavezzi retired in the.
A couple of weeks ago, wasn't this one?
Yeah, it was in the summer, you know, and then they.
Right, and we already put those ads out for the person. So there's nobody new that's resigned, as far as I know.
No, they've hired the person.
Yeah, I thought these were kinda old, Jerry, Jason's pretty old, you know, okay. Oh, so, speaking of Jason, so we've been invited to the planning board meeting on Wednesday. That's been posted, thank you, Lauren and Bob.
Five forty-five P M.
Five forty-five, because they have two public hearings, and if we were waiting for after, you wouldn't know when they were done. Wouldn't be sitting around to whenever. So they have the guy, Demers, come in for an interview with the, for Selectmen as well, and then, so both boards are so inclined.
I might not be there Wednesday.
Or so men, or?
I don't know what my plans are yet.
Are they, are they, are they recommending Demers, or is it?
I believe they are, yeah.
Okay.
They did reach out to Mark Mosher, and she was not interested, because her job had changed. And Don Collins was not interested either.
There's only one, I do have a question, though, if you could check it out. In the, in the law that sets this up for us to appoint, it says that we have to give one week notice. Is that before the positions fill? Is that one week notice, like, you know, John resigned, and we're gonna fill this, you know, at some point? Or does it notice, is it one week, we've got someone? You follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, because it's been vacant for a while.
Yeah, so I, I don't know if that means, like I say, there's been a resignation, we're gonna fill it, right? But, uh, is, is you have to give one, you know, I, I, it's, if your roles could tell us in a minute, it's, it's, uh, ambiguous at best.
There is still the opening on the advisory committee, I did speak to Doug and Rick. Uh, because it's not within thirty days of the town meeting, it's actually for the advisory committee to fill the spot. The moderator does it if it's within thirty days of the coming town election. That's in the general bylaw, yeah. But if it's outside that period, they fill.
They fill themselves, huh?
I think they're scouting around for somebody for the advisory committee.
You have due advice?
You were a pretty good advisor earlier.
And also, uh, I appreciate Tad's comments last week. I did throw my name in for the associate member for the planning board, and they took it under advisement, that'll also be on the agenda for Wednesday, so. I think John Matthews and I agreed, that was the, the average seating for the associate member. I talked to Rick Rean, it's once per year over the past ten years.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because you're only pulled in on a special permit when they can't get a super majority quorum of. So, we're back to, gosh, Judy Jackson was at one time, Depp House, you know? Back in the day. Right, now the big thing on the agenda, we have talked about this before, brought it back up. We have a need possibly for a new health coordinator in January, and discussion of, uh, Bob's future.
We clearly need to get an ad ready and get it out there to replace the health coordinator. And what I liked about the Collins Institute's job description, it's Health and Operations Coordinator, because that is really what, among other things, Jane does. I mean, she, she's involved with the transfer station. If something goes wrong in the building, she's the one that makes the calls to a plumber or whatever, and so.
But is that too diverse, though? I mean, running the health department and.
It is, yeah, it is, but, but.
I know this description of her job.
She works it.
But would you be able to find somebody to do that?
Well, i- if we, if we don't include that, then we could take it out, it's in there now. What, um, what do you suggest for a, for a facilities manager?
Well, Jane's made the suggestion, she has a chap up at, I believe, Transfer Station, be interested in doing possibly some of the work around here that needs doing in terms of maintenance. We used to have Larry Moriarty back in the day, uh, you know, as a handyman, if you will. And this type of thing, maybe. I think Mark also has a guy in his department that'd be interested in doing that type of work. The danger, or sorry, not danger, what you have to be cautious of is that they're separate from the hours they work, so it's not like, if they do stuff here, it's all overtime. It has to be clear that it's a separate function that doesn't, you know, pass into the forty-hour thing.
So I can, I can take that, that piece out of the job description, but that's what.
Well, I think there's a lot of roles there that we need to talk about, too. I mean, Jane does billing for, say, the Water District, and she does all the paperwork for that.
She schedules, she schedules bills generally.
Yeah, it goes through the building, the schedules for that, um, the camera system, um, town hall access, stuff like that, you know? Does that fall under? The Board of Health? You know, or, you know?
As well, just default to her, basically, right?
You know, do we, you know, I guess operations coordinator, I mean, would fit the, the role there, but, now, that's kind of secondary to Board of Health coordinator.
Right. If you got somebody coming in, working Board of Health, would they have the time to do all these other things?
Right. And then we talked about one time about having, you know, the, the EMD role, you know, within, whether it's within this department or within health coordinator, however we wanna see that, but.
She's also thirty-five hours.
Yeah, I could see that. I could see the EMD rolling at the health department a little easier than.
Right.
Checking on toilets and, you know, the light bulbs.
Yeah, yeah, but then, you know, should, should town administrator be in charge of cameras and building access? You know? Facilitating the, the structure of the hierarchy in here?
Or is there a facilities manager? And not to throw it out there, should the highway commissioner be a little more in charge of facility because he's a hardware guy?
But then it means he'd be in charge of all town buildings, right?
Possibly. I mean, I ask questions about, in other towns, the DPW have a little more oversight on town buildings. Are they the most logical department that would be interactive with buildings, basically?
If, I mean, more and more towns, sizable towns, I guess, are going with facilities managers. Also, if you have your district school system, one facilities manager for schools in town makes a lot of sense. Justifies full-time work and salary.
Well, look over the commons, they have a full-time guy. Was Jim, and now they have the new guy there, I mean, he's full-time doing the work. For how many units, twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight, yeah. I do know Mark's, well, I got a couple part-time guys over there, maybe. I don't know how one person would fill into another oversight role like that for full-time, but I don't know. Do we need to bring on a, are we talking, bringing on another full-time person in addition to health coordinator? Because there's a whole nother salary pension.
That'd go over big.
The advantage we have now is that a response to some kind of problem in the building gets instant response from Jane.
Right, yeah.
You know, if you have someone off-site.
That's true.
It might be a little bit more of a delay.
Craig's right off the street.
I'm gonna come down my plunger.
He can see the cameras. Well, so that's the end of the question. A, you've got a description for the health coordinator, is it the right description we want to put out there? Is the question. Do we want to make a second description for facilities manager, which may not be a forty-hour job? It may be a ten-hour job. You know? It might be a job not to exceed. We're gonna figure out the forty hours.
Would that facilities manager take in other buildings?
That's a good idea, we talked about that before, about the fact, you know, are we looking at Academy Hall? Does the person give us a report on the condition Oak Green Meadows and Thornton Burgess? Because they are town buildings, you know?
Well, there's enough work there to get someone at least part-time. And then the question would be the number of hours.
I go back to, I go back to your contacts, Bob. We're in that demographic, if you will, of four to seven thousand people range. What do towns that size do for facility oversight?
I think it varies. I think you're right about, uh, towns that have like a highway person who, if something goes wrong with the town hall, usually steps in and has a workforce. I mean, that's, that's the other thing.
Right.
You gotta move some boxes and stuff like that, I mean, your highway people have a, have a workforce if they can.
And they've always been great, very receptive to help over here, et cetera, so.
And we still, yeah, we utilize Mark's workforce from time to time.
I think he'd have a tough time filling a role like Jane's description right now.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
So. Well, she does, like Craig said, there's other things that aren't even covered in that list that she does, you know?
Yeah, that's a good question, I'm like, I'm looking on like Barry's website right now. Board of Health is Transfer Station.
I mean, she pays attention to the cameras, pays attention to the door locks. She always asks, what time do we lock the doors tonight and so forth? And she locks the doors for other boards and committees that meet so that the building remains a little safer, uh, in the evening. So, it's, it's kind of far-fetched from being the health coordinator.
So, why don't, why don't we go down the list and just pull out the health coordinator stuff first?
So, yeah.
Just, just see what the health, you know?
Would you ask Jane then to do that? Tell her, actually, come up with three, I, three things that her job is, and like Don says, okay, this is H, this is actually operation or something like that, this is facilities.
Just like.
Identify them, okay?
Hey, we should have a conversation, I think, with the health district.
Let's see what they do.
Talk, talk about that function and what capacity they might have.
Right, yeah.
Under a contract or something with them separately. In which case, then we could just focus on facilities.
Right.
And planning. I mean, it's not just facilities, it's having a plan, uh, to replace certain kinds of, of basic systems or, or keeping them maintained or having them maintained. I mean, that's another thing.
We got a problem with the hot water right now that's been going on, how long, Bob?
Yeah, quite a while.
Six months, so.
Quite a while. So, uh, you know, we could end up doing something with the health district and then have that job more focused on facilities issues.
The other thing, I think, we should consolidate some of this list. Like, for instance, processes accounts payable and receivable for the department, processes all invoices for the Board of Health, that's the same thing.
I think, yeah, she's talking about other invoices, like Water District, she does stuff for. I don't know if she does anything else.
Processes all invoice for the Board of Health, so I don't know.
What's, well, what's the department? Maybe that's wrongly defined.
You know, and then like the, and the, uh, the permit, we just like.
Oh, I see what you're saying there, then.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying? And then the, you know, the coordinates permitting, uh, you know, permit renewals. And then we've got overseas licensing process for installers and haulers, well, that's the permitting process, too. I mean, you know, I, I, I know they're individual activities, but they're really, I'm just thinking of what you do a job description.
They have a higher level.
Someone looks at, someone looks at forty, forty things, and says, I don't know, but. You know, and then she, if she could break out, like John said, put an H for the health stuff and an O for operations and a.
After facilities or something like that, yeah.
And then, I don't know.
Something for other.
So other, yeah, yeah. Right?
Who's in Cory checks apply come under operations?
I wonder about that, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, she conducts, conducts Cory checks for employees or volunteers. And we have the same thing over here, which is, uh, for the emergency management thing, conducts Cory checks, so it's the same. You know, the emergency management stuff, that'll be an E, put an E next to that.
Yeah. Uh, quickly, in the never-too-early, only because I saw it on her list there, annual report.
Oh, yeah.
My thought for the cover, town hall employees in front of the town hall. A little recognition wouldn't be a bad thing.
That's a good idea.
Well, we'll go through tomorrow, I mean, the more I sit here and think, the more I can think of things that she does that we never discussed, the whole Christmas, the whole Christmas tree thing she handled, you know? Not just getting rid of the old tree, but buying a new one, making, making sure it was installed and.
Digging the hole.
I don't think she dug the hole.
Somebody else did that.
Did everything else, huh?
Might've been her husband, so, yeah. All right, and the other part of the thing is Bob and Bob's future here. Bob gave you a contract to the end of the year, and we have some nice parting gifts.
How about a Mercedes-Benz convertible? I think.
Again?
A member of Congress got one, so.
Why don't you call Richie and get it from him?
Gold bars giveaway.
What, yeah, the gold bars?
I'm gonna go with bars.
Yeah. It's just over the border, not anywhere.
Been in Connecticut.
Got, got gold bars.
Oh, really? I didn't read about that.
Worth about a hundred grand each.
We'll give you, how about we give you a hoodie like Fetterman? What good in that? But again, it's part of the discussion, you know, we talked about transition and stuff like that.
Right, yeah.
You did say the sweet spot was end of the year for getting somebody, starting to move, so.
So I think we can get into that, uh, prepare.
You know, you've talked about, okay, we gotta prepare the fact that, but I did talk about the fact smaller towns are paying less. It might be, you don't know. We're not Ipswich, we can't do that type of thing, and.
I think the.
I don't know what, I don't know what Alex Morse is making in Provincetown, but that was like three or four hundred thousand.
The looming question would be, would you want a headhunter? Or just do it ourselves, or go yourselves? The, the one advantage of a public sector consulting firm, of which there are about four in Massachusetts, McCormick is one, I keep saying McCormick, Collins is one. There's a, an independent operator on the Cape. The big one now is, is the, uh, guy in Plymouth. What they do that you don't do, that you don't get if you do it yourself, is outreach. These guys show up at every significant meeting of managers and administrators in Massachusetts, and they just stand around and talk to people. They get to know what towns are looking, uh, which administrators are looking to move, which administrators are, are not gonna be renewed, uh, which administrators are gonna retire. And so, the advantage is, they will do outreach, and they, they often try to do a match for you.
They've got, they've got the rolodex, basically.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You may wanna do it on your own, if you're not satisfied, then, then hire one of these people.
What's that cost look like for hiring somebody like that?
Uh, for a town this size, in the range of, well, everything's going up, who knows, five to six, seven thousand, maybe. But what they'll do is a brochure, uh, highlighting, uh, attractions of the town and the attractions of working in the town, and, uh, then they get it out there. And, um, I can tell you, I, I've seen some very good results. I, I saw a very good result, uh, in Beckett. I saw a good result in Southampton. Sometimes it doesn't work out, but, uh, what they'll tell you is, this is the number of administrators I've recruited for this number of towns. Here are the ones who are still on the job. And that's the other side of the coin. You don't just wanna get somebody. You wanna get somebody who's gonna stay for five, six, or seven years, two contracts or more, because the problems that we have in our local communities aren't susceptible to short-term solutions. They, they require long-term efforts. And if you have turnover, that's a, like, we've had turnover in so many public school systems. The superintendent's coming and going, uh, it, it engenders chaos.
Well, let's authorize Bob to start that conversation.
Please, man.
We're looking, we have fifteen thousand in expenses.
Yeah.
We dropped it because we barely were spending it before anyhow. So I think we can certainly find a money, Carl, let's get a quote on getting something like that and start the ball.
You want a quote?
Let's get a quote and like, and I'm gonna bring it back.
A professional?
Right. I mean, the number you're talking about, less than ten, doesn't scare me there, get, get it done right. I would like to get somebody local, just because.
They know more local people.
Local stuff, and they're gonna stay, they're not gonna drive, like we talked about before, they're gonna drive to Worcester every day to work here.
Yeah, I think, as a practical matter, your candidates are gonna come from Berkshire, Hampden, Hampshire. Maybe, uh. Maybe Western Worcester County, you know?
Hey, maybe you get somebody from Summer, you don't know, they might.
Yeah. Well, you'll get some people out of state, but frankly, I haven't seen that work out, but, but you never know, I mean, you-
Well, people do that, I mean, look at, like Dr. G. Remember, he was limiting, he had to go work in Connecticut because he couldn't do anymore in Mass. There might be people like that, it's just, you know? A first selectman in Connecticut really does the same thing as a town administrator here. Because they're the paid head of the board, right?
It's not a science. When I was in Norfolk, we had a guy who was vice president at NA, he said, we're gonna do it like Aetna does it.
Oh, geez.
And he established three committees of residents. They all took all the applications, and each committee looked at all the applicants, came up with their top two or three, came together, they came up with the top three. And I said to the selectman, you know, the guy who is our finance director, he's one of the best people around. Nobody paid attention. They went through the process, they ended up hiring the finance director.
Anyhow.
And he stayed ten, fifteen years, I forget how much. And, but, I mean, but he came right out of the private sector. But he, you could tell he wanted to absorb what government does quickly. And he, he got up to speed very quick as the finance director. And so I could see him doing that, and, and it didn't take him long, and he fit right into town administrator there. So I mean, that, that can happen.
Okay, good, well, let's progress forward and let's push forward on that. Any selectman reports? You've got your meeting tomorrow. You've got your meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, also, I was talking to Parks and Rec Chair, and a concern was brought up to me about confusion with building usage at T W B, whether custodial staff is needed, who has the authority to authorize permission. And I'm wondering if next week, maybe we can put on the agenda, bringing all the parties, you know, our, our board selectmen, the school department, and the Parks and Rec, and just so everybody can talk about what the workflow is and who's responsible for what. Just so it's not back and forth ping pong, who said he should.
Outside of the gym area, you mean, or?
Well, with, within the gym area itself, the, the facilities, the, the grounds, you know, can they use the auditorium, stuff like that, you know? You know, it's in the contract that we can use the building, the town, we, the town after school hours, if there's not a school function, so I guess there's some confusion about what's available to, for use. And if there is a janitor or custodial staff on duty that is able to facilitate that, does it need to be there? Is that part of the contract? So I guess there's a lot of questions that don't have answers, and maybe we should get everybody together, so there's no misinformation.
Okay. Do you want to talk to John about that tomorrow?
Well, okay.
And I think we'll have a planning, a joint meeting on Wednesday. There's a meeting of the Senior Center Building Committee tomorrow, we have a couple of packages to review from companies that submitted for the R F Q P?
Q.
Q, thank you.
R? S? T?
Well, it's choice, it's a request for qualification and/or request for quote. You can get both in the same package. So, we had to get some advice on that, and it came out good. So we have some discussion to start tomorrow on that. All right.
What else do you have, Joe?
Laurie, got anything?
Second.
Lauren?
I got the right link next time.
John? You're seconding the motion, or you got something to say? All right.